Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mrs. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Klinkner.
Here.
Mrs. Hendrickson.
Here.
Mr. Shavlic.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Mrs. Zimney. Written notice of this meeting was sent to the news media on Friday, January twenty-fourth. Please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First up, our invited visitor and guest tonight, we have Jared Lenzmeyer from Hawkins Ash, our CPA rep to debrief us on the 2024 financial audit. Welcome.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Am I good? Okay, so, good evening, I'm Jared Lenzmeyer with Hawkins Ash. I will be presenting the 2024 audited financial statements. First, basically, I'll go over why does the district need an audit and what is an audit? So, basically, state law requires all districts to be audited. This also provides assurances to stakeholders. What is an audit? So, basically, we are just making sure that the account balances are correct through testing and evaluate internal controls. We also test federal and state single audit to make sure those numbers are correct. Then, when we have the audit, in late May or early June, we send out approximately twenty-five items for our preliminary audit. Then, we send out seventy-five items in July to do our final audit work, which the finance team does a great job in getting requested information turned around to us in a short period of time. Usually, our audit for this one is scheduled like two weeks after year-end, which it's pretty tight turnaround. And most of them are, you know, after that, so they do a great job. So then, at the end of the audit, the district receives the following documents. We do auditor aid certification, the financial statement, the communication with those charged with governance and management advisory comments, and then the data collection form. If you guys have any questions, just stop me, I'll answer. So, basically, do you guys have a financial at all? I don't know if you guys do. So, on pages three through five, which is the independent auditor's report, this gives the opinion of the audit, which we gave unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion yet you can receive. And then, basically, it goes through what management is expected to do and what we are expected to do. Then, there's a few pages, the government or the management discussion and analysis summary. So, this basically goes through the summary of the year in like small snippets, like capital assets, long-term debt. Then, it goes on to the statement on net position, which basically brings capital assets and long-term obligations on to the financial statement. Those aren't shown on the general fund balance sheet, which that is basically just revenues, expenditures, assets, and liabilities. So, for your general fund unassigned, you had an increase of about a million. And the general fund unassigned is approximately twenty-nine percent of the general fund budgeted expenditures, which we recommend twenty percent, which, so that's good. Then, it goes on to the notes, which the notes are basically a lot of standard verbiage. There's a lot of, I don't know, you guys would probably be pretty bored reading through some of this stuff. It goes in-depth more on like capital assets, cash, your long-term liabilities, the Wisconsin retirement system, the Wisconsin retirement system local retirement life insurance, and then OPEB and the supplemental pension. So then, on page, oh, on page thirty, that is the outstanding long-term bonds, which you have about thirty-six and a half million, which would be under your state statute debt limit of eighty-nine million. To move on, on page sixty, that is the federal grants expended, which was about three point six million, which was an increase of about six hundred thousand. The next page is your state grants expended, which is about seventeen point seven million, which was a decrease of about a hundred and thirty thousand. Going on to pages sixty-three and sixty-four, the report on internal control over financial reporting. Basically, this tells you what findings we have. The one finding we had was financial statement prep, which we resolved that by hiring us as your accountants. And then, the other one that we would normally put on here is segregation of duties, but the internal controls and procedures that are implemented separate the checks and balances, so we do not have that on here. Pages sixty-five through sixty-seven, this is your report on compliance of each major federal program, which we test a few major programs, special education, cluster, and the education stabilization fund. And then, one major state program, which is the equalization aid and, or two, say, equalization aid and per pupil aid. We had no findings noted in those tests. Lastly, I'd just like to say, the finance team is very responsive and helpful during the audit. There was only two auditor journal entries, which shows that the books are being kept in great shape. And we have no issues with the finance team. Any questions? That's all I have. Yeah.
Just one question, and this is probably my third or fourth time receiving the audit.
Yep.
Do we always get kudos and we don't remember ever having a finding or a real issue?
Yep.
But what would be a typical finding that a school district might get from your team?
Um, the main ones are like significant audit adjustments, which that is if we have a materiality, and if a journal entry we make is over that materiality, we have to put that on there as a significant audit adjustment. That's a main one. The segregation of duties is another one. A lot of our small districts get that because they don't have enough people to cover. And then, the prep of financial statements. There's not many other ones that we give out.
You know money structure, what's a materiality?
So, basically, we take, like, we take the total assets and we take a percentage of that, which it brings it down to, there's three tiers. It takes like thirty percent, then it goes down to ten percent, and then seven and a half percent. And that seven and a half percent of the total assets is what the materiality is. So, it's a pretty big number usually, and it would take a lot for your school district to be over that. But some of our other school districts are a lot smaller, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, thank you for coming, thank you Mary Kay and team for another solid year.
Yeah. And lastly, I would like to say, thank you for letting us do your audit, and we look forward to it next year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight? I didn't see any tonight, all right. Any communications to be shared?
No communications.
Then we'll move on to the financial section here. First up, we've got the referendum bills to be paid for January twenty-twenty-five in the amount of six hundred sixty thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and eighteen cents. Were there any questions or concerns looking through that list of bills from anyone? If not, I'd look for a motion to go ahead and approve payment of the referendum bills, January twenty-twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All in favor of payment of referendum bills, January twenty-twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Committee reports. February third will be the next facility and technology committee meeting. There was a negotiations slash finance meeting on January sixteenth, and Tim can give a short debrief on that.
Sure. So, we've been meeting periodically in preparation for the negotiations that are coming up. The other thing that we've been working on is a way to sort of revamp our financial reports that we get. And Lori or Wendy or Zach, jump in if you like, but make it a little more user-friendly, I guess, for not only us, but for the public that's seeing those reports. The biggest change, we're hoping, is going to be probably a two to three-page overview, snapshot with more words than numbers. And we're letting that up to Mary Kay, how you want to formulate that for the first crack at it. There are some financial reports, too, that can take what was maybe a sixteen-page financial report and narrow it down to a couple pages of summary-type numbers instead of all the details and things. The details will be available if anybody wants to see them. But in general, we're going to take a lot of pages down to less pages and more maybe explanation and that, so that a lot of it, too, we said, that Mary Kay doesn't necessarily have to sit here and explain to us what all these numbers are. They'll be in a report that people can actually read. So, hopefully, we'll answer a lot of questions that people might have and for us, too. So, we're working on that.
Great, thank you. And next meeting for that team, February eighteenth. Policy meeting, next meeting is Wednesday. Few things on the agenda for that group. We've got some federal grant-based policies that have a set of updates to go through. And then, we have a couple stragglers that we were cleaning up over the last six months or so. Just to finish, I think maybe one on the web design and maybe use of funds and just different things. So, that'll be Wednesday. And then, I imagine soon after that, we'll get our bigger stack of updates from the policy company to go ahead and look at. So, those would be the committees. Any old business? I don't see any.
No.
All right. Then on to new business. And the first item on the agenda there is accepting the retirement of Tracy Jager, second-grade teacher at Koenig, effective at the end of the school year.
Yep, so this is our first retirement for this, for the end of the school year. So, Tracy has been teaching, most currently teaching second grade at Koenig. She's been a teacher for thirty-four years, twenty-six in our district. So, she will be missed very much.
Sounds like we'll be keeping her a little bit, though. She's gonna be doing some subbing?
That would be awesome.
That would be great. And Mrs. Jager, my daughter had her in the fourth grade. She was at McGee at the time. And fourth grade was a tough year for my little girl, and Mrs. Jager was just the right teacher for that girl at that time. So, I have a, always have a fond spot for her. I'm so, I'd look for a motion to accept Tracy's retirement.
I'll make the motion to accept the retirement for Tracy.
Second.
All right, all in favor of accepting the retirement notice of Tracy Jager, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you, Tracy. Second item of new business, we've got the first reading of the twenty-twenty-five twenty-six school calendar.
Yep, so during our last board meeting, we had a team of people come and talk to you about Act Twenty. And they shared the, kind of the big lift that's taking place at the elementary school with the requirements for screeners, diagnostics, personalized reading plans, interventions. And so, as we're looking at the calendar for, at least the draft calendar for next year, we're looking at asking the board to support three days for the elementary teachers to have time to work on those specific items that are required in Act Twenty. So, you'll see on the draft calendar, a day in November, a day in January, and a day in April. Those are, they may look like random days, but Act Twenty has requirements, specifically how many days have to be from the beginning of testing, how many days you have to finish a screener if they're below the twenty-fifth percentile, then when, then finishing a diagnostics, it's ten days. Then, you must have the PRP in place, the personalized reading plan. So, those days on the calendar aren't random. They are very connected to the requirements of Act Twenty. So, that is one change that administration is asking the board to support. As far as hours of instruction for the elementary, the elementary has always followed the overall district's number of hours for instruction. So, at the elementary level, ten hundred and fifty hours of instruction are required each year from the DPI. Middle and high school require eleven hundred and thirty-seven hours. So, the elementary's always followed that eleven hundred and thirty-seven along with the rest of the district. So, by adding the three days in, we would still have, and adding three inclement weather days in, we still have ten hundred and sixty-five hours of instruction. So, we're still meeting that need. I do want to kind of bring up, too, one idea that Chad had is, you know, one of the things we struggle with is having the ability to have enough subs in our district when we want to have focus groups or teams meeting during the school day. One of the suggestions was that middle school, high school could do some planning during those three days, and then people who don't have classrooms in the elementary could support middle school and high school during those days. So, middle school and high school then could have that planning time or those tasks force groups that they typically have. And we've had task groups this year that have been canceled because we, it's planned, and then we have teachers out, and there's not enough subs, and so, that's always a challenge. So, that was a great brainstorm by our elementary principal. So, we did share the calendar with TRBA. We're sharing it with you tonight. And then, we would look to share it with our staff tomorrow. This is only a first reading, and then we'd be bringing it back to you at the next one for approval.
Did you mean TREA?
TREA, sorry, not BA.
TREA is probably interested in you, but.
No, it is EA, Education Association. Thank you. I see, I wrote it wrong in my notes, too.
We don't, yeah, right, TREA.
We don't anticipate or expect or plan to vote on this tonight.
No.
It's our first read. We kind of got a little bit of a sneak preview, I guess, at the last meeting. It was available to us to see, so I'd like to just take this opportunity to get board thoughts. This is something different, and I would like to just kind of hear where everyone's at, so we can kind of mull it over going forward. And I'll go ahead and start. And we really appreciate last meeting, all the information we got on the Act Twenty and the particulars and that, hopefully, if all works as planned, that gets less and less every year because wit and wisdom gets better and better every year, and we have less and less falling below. But we know that's not necessarily reality. And we understand this is a big endeavor that all four hundred twenty-two school districts are facing, correct? Everyone has to do this. So, I'll just give my opinion. I'm not for taking three days off the calendar for this. To me, that's too much of an ask, to close down two full elementary schools for three full days for this. I'd like to see Plan B. I don't see this as the only way that this could happen. Now, I understand that could sound like, well, you don't support teachers. No, you can have both. You cannot take three days away from the kids and have the families make arrangements and all of that, and you can still support teachers. So, I would, that would be my preference, to look for a different way to make this work. We have a lot of early Wednesdays. I do, I wasn't always a fan of that. I support it now, that I see the value of it over the years. We've got professional development. I understand there's math. We've got, I would like to see some other options than three days. I have a hard time asking us, asking the community and the kids to do that. So, that's just me, but I want to hear from the others, what your thoughts are.
And I don't know, I don't want to put Dana and Chad on the spot, but is it possible for you guys to come back with some answers to, or could they provide, excuse me, I'm sorry, could they provide answers in the meantime to us, to some of these questions? Because I've got some specifics about teachers, like how many teachers does this affect? I know you have a good idea about what to do with the teachers that it doesn't necessarily affect. Some people are going to look at this and say, you've already got eighty-five extra hours built in. You know, why isn't that enough? Let's see. And then, I think along the same lines as Jen, is could some of those Wednesday half-days be used? Hour here, two hours there? That's every Wednesday throughout the whole school calendar. I don't know if that's possible, because I don't know what all those half-Wednesdays are used for, so.
Well, and there's the ten-day window. We gotta be mindful of that.
Right, exactly.
So, maybe a Wednesday or two will fall in there. That, maybe it won't be enough. But can we get other kinds of coverage or?
And I'm not saying I'm not for it, I'm not against it. I just, I guess, would like some more information. What's going to be done with, what exactly is going to be done with those three days? Who's going to be involved? Like you said, what are the others doing? If, if you're, if you want to. Sure. Because, I mean, I think we all understand that what's, what you have to deal with, with the new requirements and things is a big task. I get it.
Yeah.
I get it. And we want to give you the time that's necessary to do a good job for teachers' mental health and also for the kids' well-being, you know?
I think it's a lot, too, for kids, taking kids, three less days of school for the kids.
My thought was the family burden, like we have in our family. The high school child on a day off would take care of the grade-school child. So, now, we're saying that family has to put their child in daycare at an expense or take off work at an expense or find grandma's.
I just think, yeah, it's just three more days that the kids are out. I would, and I don't know how we would do this, but supporting, bringing subs in or whatever to give teachers time to take care of this business, you know? You know, is it going to cost overtime or some? I don't know, but bringing additional staff in to help out, but, yeah, I guess I'd like to look at other options, too.
Yeah, it's definitely unprecedented, right? We've never gone through this process before. Other districts haven't either. I can give you a little bit of background as to what happened last Friday, because we did have a professional development day last Friday. Luckily, that fell within our window, so that was, that was nice. And we don't have a math adoption this year, and our teachers aren't going through their requisite Act Twenty training this year. They'll do that next year. So, that professional development day was readily available for us to do some of the work that Act Twenty does require them to do. A case in point would be third grade. I was at Koenig, had the opportunity to sit with the second-grade team and watch them write their personalized reading plans. They came together as a team, which I thought was, was a nice idea so that, you know, they could share ideas across the table from one another. So, you know, Wendy and I are both second-grade teachers. The teachers could sit down and they could talk about students that had some unique characteristics. They could also talk about students who had similarities. So, if I had a student who had some similar needs, I was able to share the plan, progress monitoring with Wendy, and we were able to collaborate together. It also, at that point in time, allowed for a special education teacher and for a title teacher to sit in on that conversation, right? So, that time was, was nice because the team itself could sit down and could work together. Third-grade team, I asked them, how long to write your personalized reading plans? I needed to know, how long did it take? And I said about three hours to write the plans from start to finish. First time doing them, right? So, that's about how long they took. The next steps after that were looking for the resources. So, it was great, was that one of our third-grade teachers, Lindsay, she's all at, at Koenig, was, right away, she was grabbing resources, because each one of the students, remember, has a unique plan, right? So, she was grabbing resources right away that she was going to be able to use with the students during intervention time. The part they didn't get to, because as you know, report cards, right? We have a reporting time, so they, so they used their afternoon time on last Friday to do their report carding. The part that they didn't get to, and this is something that they're working through, is, okay, now that I've got the personalized reading plan built, and I've got all the intervention tools in front of me, how now do I restructure my day, right? Remember, I said that we're looking at something that's pretty unprecedented. And now, I, as a teacher, as a classroom teacher, I'm looking to restructure my day so that I have the ability to provide those interventions to the students in small group, maybe during a different time during, during the typical school day. And I also want to be able to work with my title teacher. I want to be able to work with my special education teacher. I want to be able to work with my ML teacher to know when they're going to be able to come in and provide support. It's kind of like a unique line dance. Have you ever been line dancing before? Everybody goes right, y'all should go right. You go left, you go left, right? If you're going the wrong way, things are going to get a little bit bananas. So, having the ability for those teams to come together and to collaborate is really one of the, one of the reasons why for the ask. Again, having kids not in school, believe me, we, a lot of sweat and a lot of, a lot of whiteboard markers and a lot of trying to figure out some other plans, and, you know, we definitely could go back to the drawing board. But that's kind of, kind of the why, because having that opportunity to come together and plan as a cohesive team is what we're looking to do.
Staffing, Tim, you had asked. So, our buildings are somewhat similar in numbers. So, like by me, I've got eighteen classrooms, two title teachers, three special ed teachers, and an ML teacher. And then, we have our encores, so art, music, FIED, computers. So, if we looked at that model where we said those people could be available to support middle school math teams, so the middle school math teachers could meet on that day. We could use those specialists, reassign them for the day to support in another building. Then, we're not trying to get six subs into a building, which we, I think, was it last Monday, Diane? We had, LB Clark had ELA task force, and, you know, starting at five-thirty in the morning, when we deal with this stuff, we're canceling this meeting, we're pulling the subs out LB Clark, we're bringing them over to the elementary. We were just short-staffed. So, the greatest laid plans are, well, we'll get subs. We get six subs that cover that day, and you got six teacher absences now that you can't cover. So, the idea that those people would be available three times a year for the other two buildings to use, that they could use some of their team meetings, and we wouldn't have to worry about pulling subs that we have to fill classrooms with because we'd have that staff available. So, that's kind of where that staffing idea came from.
So, how many teachers are directly involved in the?
In the PRP?
Yep.
So, all the classroom teachers?
Good.
Special ed teachers, title teachers, and the ML teacher. They all have a role in that, in that plan. So, whether that student receives services through title, through special ed, ML, and then the regular ed and special ed teachers, so.
Twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, yeah.
About twenty-four, twenty-five people. So, they all have a role in it.
Who's left?
Jackie answers the phone, and, you know, we're running around trying to help teams. At the elementary, it pretty much is just about everybody. It would just be your encores, art, music, FIED, that kind of stuff.
What about the fourth grade and the 4K? Or 4K's not by McGee, but.
Yeah, so fourth grade is going to have a role in this. So, we're not prepared tonight to do a whole big fourth grade, but PRPs are going to roll up in the fourth grade. So, if you don't meet your requirements at the end of grade three, that plan goes with you to grade four. So, inherently, they will be part of that plan. A student would not be identified necessarily in grade four for a PRP. They'd be identified before they got to grade four. So, they still will have a role in this. PRPs will roll up to the middle school. We'll have students that could have a personalized reading plan at the middle school.
And next year, pre-K will be tested in the fall and in the winter, spring. And next year, uh, pre-K will be tested in the fall and in the winter, uh, spring. So they're gonna be tested as well and end up having PRPs.
They won't have a PRP until they become kinders, so.
You can't spell PRP when you're in four K. Come on.
Yeah. Yeah, and in the time commitment thing, I mean, a a quick trip down memory lane, uh, when Dana and I first started, we were done at uh two fifteen. At the elementaries. We extended our day to three o'clock about ten years ago. Um, so we added forty-five minutes to our school day at the elementary. And our Wednesdays, uh, we get out at two fifteen, so we get out forty-five minutes early on Wednesday. And then staff is working till four. By the time you load your buses and get your cars loaded and get a bathroom break in there, um, you can get. An hour, hour and fifteen worth of time in for those staff. But the timing is the most important thing to fit within the ten, ten-day timeframe. Um, I think at four oh five on Friday, um, Kyle pushed the button to send these out to families. So they went out through Infinite Campus so we could be compliant with our ten days. So there definitely is a kind of a Jenga piece there where you have to do all of those processes. Get to the end and you have to get it back out to families within those ten days, so.
And this is going on right now for the, kind of the first time officially?
Yeah. And the hard part about it is, um, when we talk about this um PRP writing and the planning and and looking at the interventions, everything that Kyle talked about. That's not something that you can do when you got kids in your classroom. Like, there's all, you can only spin so many plates. And they need a chunk of time. Somewhere to sit down, you know, uninterrupted for, you know, a better part of a day to get all those things in place. And that plan has to be delivered for ten weeks. So, you know, you can write the plan, but then you gotta figure out, what am I doing week one, week two, week three? I gotta monitor it weekly. So all of those pieces would be part of that time that they can get those, that legwork done ahead of time so that. In their ten-week cycle, they can have a good jump on what they need to do. And this is outside of everything else that they need to do for core instruction, so.
I have a question on the second and third test. Is that? Maintenance where there would be a little less of the work, or is it still, you're recreating what you did that first time? So if I. Or is it a whole new lesson plan? I would imagine a whole new.
Oh, you're talking like the second, the second testing window, the second time we screen. Yeah, we'll do the fall and then the winter.
Is it is labor intensive is?
It's gonna be about the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, when a student gets a personalized reading plan, so first grade student receives that plan maybe in the fall. They don't receive a brand-new hundred percent plan in the winter, it's revised. So if you think about. We have a student who we're progress monitoring. We have interventions and supports in place. We assess them in the fall. And they still have that plan. We put those interventions in place until the winter. If they haven't achieved above a forty percentile rank, they haven't exited out of that personalized reading plan, in all likelihood. We gotta do something a little bit different, right? Um, we have to maybe uh intensify that 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 support. Uh, we have to maybe do it a little bit more frequently. So instead of two days a week, maybe three days a week. Maybe that um particular resource that we're using or support that we're using has to change. And so the plan from top to bottom wouldn't have to be rebuilt. It's just that how the intervention is given, that would be different. And then how it's progress monitored, that would be different. Those two things, how the plan is given and progress monitored. Would take concert between the classroom teacher, special educator, title teacher, and the ML teacher. So what you wouldn't have is that front half of building the actual plan from scratch. But you do have that back half of rearranging what that intervention and support looks like. So uh, when a student, and just to speak a little bit more into fourth grade. When they transition to fourth grade, the personalized reading plan transitions more into an intensive reading plan is what it'll be called. Um, and we're using data right now to try to grab and pull. And what we're noticing is that our fourth grade students and our third grade students. You'll see this a little bit later on, are some of the students that have the the most significant needs. Kind of makes sense. They're the students that didn't get that really explicit and systematic instruction in phonics. Um, which is what we've transitioned to. So we're seeing that there's a higher need. We have more students on personalized plans or intensive plans in those third and fourth grade levels. So although the state doesn't require us to have fourth graders on plans, it is in our best interest to keep them monitored and on that intervention plan. Because they really do need the support, especially going up to the middle school.
How many, how many kids, you guys mentioned this last time, I think. How many kids are ballpark? I'm not gonna hold you to a number.
That, that's coming up in the next part of our presentation.
Oh, I'm jumping a gun.
Yes, we're gonna be uh under administrative update. We have all of that data.
Ruin that then.
Yeah, we have no slides to share if we give to you.
Okay, okay.
No, we we do have our data from that last window.
Forty percent of current elementary students.
Okay. Um, the only thing I have is, I mean, there there are people out there, I mentioned it before, that are gonna be saying, well, okay. You've already got eighty-five extra hours. You got these half-days on Fridays, right? What would you say to us, to them? Are there things you guys think, and whoever wants, doesn't make a difference, things you could maybe cut out? You know, are, do we, I I don't know. The, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying people are gonna be thinking, are there things that you're doing now that? We could do differently or not do to use that time better or more effectively? Um, what would you say to them?
Well, certainly there's things we would cut out. However, there are requirements of the law.
Yep.
And the requirement of the law is also next year to train our teachers on those literacy days. So on the purple days, you have five on there. Have, hmm, four of those are for report cards half-days. And then four of those or five of those are gonna have to be for those trainings that we talked about that we are required for our teachers, the literacy training. So those are gonna have to occur on those times. With the, with the math adoption, those are gonna have to happen on Wednesdays. And or wha- whatever larger chunks of time. So that's how you answer it. We have to do the requirement of the law. We have to build these PRPs. We have to do the trainings next year, but we also have an adoption of a math curriculum. Which are important to the data that you're seeing, right? That we have a task force that did that work. That is gonna bring a recommendation to you, and that's needed for our kids. So. That's how I would answer it. Coming off the plate, I don't think anything could come off the plate that we're. In our jurisdiction to do so, but also we want to add the math component, and I think that's what's gonna be good for kids. So Wednesdays aren't necessarily half-days either. They're really what Chad said, like an hour, just over an hour. Which, if it takes two and a half hours to write PRPs, that's not gonna quite do it within that ten minute, uh, ten-day window.
That's true. Us classifying it as a half-day is not accurate at all.
Right.
It's an hour.
Right.
Yeah.
Are other districts that are similar in our size doing the same thing? Or something similar to this, like the three days off or?
Yes, Luxembourg, Casco, um, I I have a a district assessment coordinator, a crew that I kind of bounce ideas off of a little bit. We were all together uh two Fridays ago, uh, talking about what our processes are going to be. And Mike, um, and I spoke. Curriculum director there. He said, yeah, we're looking to give more days and more time. Had a great conversation with Kohler. Um, they were asking us what we were doing with the process, so taking a lot of notes. Um, at this point in time, it was. You know, us just trying to figure out what we could do with our calendar. So it was kind of a big, big brainstorm session, but Casco was one of the districts that said, yeah. We're gonna get some more days.
Did they by chance tell you what parents thought?
They did not, no. Um, I did not get a response from that. Nope. So we've also collaborated with them. Um, Denmark, a couple of the Southern Door, uh, on how to, how to do the screeners and the diagnostics to be more efficient on those ends as well. And we talked about, um, you know, bringing in our substitutes. Well, you know, sometimes we can't always bring in substitutes. So, so what can we do to be more efficient in our screening and diagnostic times? Um, in order to make the process a bit more seamless. I, I think it's important to mention, and I guess maybe I'm speaking a little bit for. For the elementary principals, maybe Diane, but I don't think this process needs to be a s- process that's set in stone forever and ever and ever. Amen. Um, we are really asking a lot, a big lift of our elementary staff. And I keep going back and forth. I keep thinking, gosh, math, too. You know, holy buckets. And now we put, we put it uh on a hold for a year because of Act Twenty, but. You know, we're at a point now where our contract is up with math expressions. We needed to do something. And uh, that, that's kind of why this confluence of events is occurring right now. Take that along with the required literacy training that our staff has to go through next year, and it's a lot next year. So would we expect this to be the schedule in perpetuity? I don't believe so. Um, but it it definitely is. We we feel a a need in twenty-five, twenty-six.
It sounds like you, Wendy was, to Wendy's question, it sounds like as the year wears on. Perhaps things, dare I say, would get easier because you were modifying a plan you wrote earlier in the year. Or maybe the student comes off of the PRP, right?
Correct.
So the first day may be the most important. Got it?
And the process, I think, we're gonna get better at it.
Yeah.
I think once you do it and you go through it a couple of times. Um, I I think, you know, looking at the s- the calendar, I I would say probably the biggest concern would be, these are our elementary students. There would be three days slated in there that they wouldn't come to school and the other buildings would. If it's a secondary schedule change, we don't really think a lot about it. We've, we've changed secondary schedules a lot. We do it for finals. We do it for ACT. We do it for other things like that. Because they're older. Our thought was if we can get this calendar out and, you know, next, in two weeks would be the, would hopefully be the final read. In February, that families know about it, that they at least have the information ahead of time and. And could do a little bit of pre-planning for stuff for next school year. Um, we can work on, you know. Getting this out to families, kind of marketing so that they have it marked on their calendars. These are the dates that would be coming up. Um, we certainly understand that piece, but like I said, doing this work with a classroom full of kids is not a reality. So we have to find a time within their contracted workday that we can get some of these things done. Um, and I'm not gonna ask them to pack a bag and do it on Saturdays and Sundays or, you know, at night, cause like we're. You know, all the things that we mentioned are Act Twenty training, our math adoption, all of those things are are pretty much earmarking most of those other times that are on the calendar.
I don't expect either of you to speak for all of the parents at your respective schools, but do you have a feel for? What they might think? Maybe they watched the last board meeting and got a taste for, I I don't know.
I mean, we don't. On a normal school year, when we have a Friday, we have last Friday is in service and records, like, we don't get any kickback on those days. It's in the school calendar. It's just kind of, it's known. The only thing different here is it's only one level. Within the district instead of all three levels. Um, you know. And.
Yeah.
Hours-wise, we're, you know, Diane kind of went through the math, we're, we're well, well ahead of the ballgame there as far, so we're not close to. Not being compliant with the state as far as hours, cause we're quite a bit over at the elementary.
Yeah.
So.
No, it's a good point. And I mean, I think of the snow day or the cold day or whatever you wanna call it, what, last week? Right? That's a last second, we're not having school.
Yeah.
This year, I mean, if we do approve this next month, not, not, that would be next month, wouldn't it? Um, nine months in advance. So, okay.
Those snow days too, Tim, are built in. So those three days, if they happen, great. If they don't happen, great. Like, they aren't, that doesn't make us any less compliant.
Oh, I understand. I'm just saying that's a, that's a last second, we're not having school today.
Yeah.
No warning. So.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, one of my thoughts, and I know I I sent Kyle a big list of questions. So he was nice enough to take the time to respond to all of them. Um, but the food insecurities of this families, that's a concern of mine. I know most of the families. Rely on us for two meals out of the three. Um, so what is the plan for that? I know Kyle's response was more what Manitowoc did, but what would Two Rivers look like?
Kyle's got a plan. Come on up.
No, I just, I I thought, um, when, when COVID came around and that was, you know, a very, um, common concern. It, um, uh, the, the folks in in Manitowoc thought did a nice job of railing behind, and I, I'm assuming it was done here as well. Providing food uh for families. And there were certain drop-off points um throughout the city. So, um. You know, I I don't wanna speak for our food service, um, although every interaction I've ever had with our food service team has been incredible. And um, they are amazing human beings. So I think between either them or some of our community partners. Uh, that could be an option for us to provide some, some pack-and-go meals for some families on those days when, when we're not in session. Cause you're right, I think a lot of families do um rely on that, 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 the food that they get from us. So. Um, I didn't, I, shame on me. I didn't think about that, Lori, until you emailed, and I thought, ah, that'd be a huge thing for us to capitalize on and and support families.
Um, and then I had another question. Um, somewhere along the lines, I read the. Bottom eleven percent, Title One is going to be. Working with. So do we know how many students are in that eleven percent? Cause I saw the forty-six percent or whatever the percentage that you'll be talking about later. So Title One will take the eleven percent and lower. So that will take that off of the teacher's plate. I mean, I know they collaborate still, but.
Yeah, I mean, it, they're, they're a support service for that plan, so it doesn't come off of anybody's plate, really. The classroom teacher is, still has work that they're doing. So it's not like we're just gonna pick them up and say they go right to title spot. I mean, the classroom teacher still has a lot of responsibility, so that's a collaborative piece right there. So. Um, and that's the same with special education. Like, if it's a special education student, the classroom teacher doesn't get to just say. Okay, that goes over to special ed. Um, they're still a member of their classroom, so they have to take care of supporting that together, so.
So would, would the title and the special ed teacher do the PRP? Cause it sounds like that's one of the time-consuming pieces, or would the teacher still do that?
Well, if it's special ed, just remember that if they have a IEP in literacy, they don't have to have a PRP. However, they can have a PRP if they're math or behavioral. So they could have a PRP even if they were special education. Two, the intervention piece about the eleven percent. Um, that being said, it, we have to think about intensity when we build those PRPs. So it could be that Title One's doing eleven percent, but if they need in addition to, it could fall on the classroom teacher to provide. A second set of interventions.
Right.
To build the intensity on the PRP. So it could be both, um, that are doing that. In addition to ML. ML could be a part of supporting that student who has Title One services. They can be in both categories and have services from ML and Title. So that's why we need everybody at the drawing, at at the table when we draw these out.
Um, I know another question I had for Kyle with the PRP. I went on the DPI's website just to see how cumbersome this is. Um, because I'm a very visual learner, so I have to look at it. And he said he was gonna, we were gonna adopt something like that, but, you know, have some prefilled areas that can make it a little quicker. So is there, and maybe you've already working on this, I'm sure, but like a dropdown box? Because it's, um, you know, letter identification and sound identification that a child is struggling with. That it's a dropdown box where you can just click on the dropdown box and click on it, and it prefills? To try to make that process of completing the PRP?
Yep, that's what we did. We did do that already. Uh, it is seven pages. The PRP is actually seven pages long. Uh, pages six and seven are what you're talking about, where there's the intervention and the progress monitoring. Um, we can do that. Uh, they still have to select what intervention they're doing. Based on that need. If it's sound letter fluency, they still have to pick something to support that. And so that's where they're putting some of the interventions in from a menu of options, yes. But again, every student has their different needs. So even if I'm in Brianna Wagner's class and I have eight PRPs to write. Every student's gonna have different interventions that are needed. But yes, we already did that. We also added sentence stems for them. So that every, it would even take less off their plate to have to start the, the analogy part of it. So we also provided that when we built it. To keep in mind that it's gonna take a laborious time to put these together. Um, but we did put a lot of the already things you're talking about in for them for this round. So. And you know, there are districts that are just putting temp, I'm gonna be honest, templates out there. Hey, if they're, or a reading fluency. Pick this template and download it and check it off your list. Well, that's not what we're gonna do. We're not gonna just pick one out of air and hope that it fits that student and just call it a day to be in compliance. So we're building it so that we know it and then can implement it and then progress monitor it. So that's how we choose to do it as well.
Sorry, I've got another question. Um, so, and I had sent this to Kyle as well. I was at a function. Where there was at least ten retired teachers at that function. And I used to work with every single one of them. So. My brainstorming was how can we make this work? Cause I know our subpool isn't um as grand as it could be. And I just thought, oh, what if we could tap into some of these retirees? If they would say yes, of course, we would have to get them to say yes, to assist with, you know. Filling in the classroom while the teacher is being pulled out to finish these PRPs or do whatever needs to be done. And I don't know what a nightmare that would be on the financial piece of things, but I was just trying to think outside of the box if that was possible.
Yeah, and some of them came this time. So it was amazing. So thank you. Um, and then also, don't forget when they're gone, they have to write sub-plans. So on top of having to be gone, just, just a note, so, not that that matters with your decision, but. To be gone, it requires you then to to fill the classroom with plans and all the things on top of being gone. Just a note.
If any of those ten are interested, they know how to get ahold of any one of us. I I will tell you, a lot of teachers like retirement. Um, we, we do get fewer and feat, fewer teachers that come back and sub for us, which is great. You put your twenty-five to thirty-five years in. Um, we did do some phone calls, those people are not on our sub-list, to say, hey, would you be interested? Uh, we use some people at the White House, um, to support some of that process. Um, so we did, we did look at that. We didn't go back like real, real far. I've, I've kind of making the assumption if you haven't subbed for us or haven't worked in the district the last couple of years. PRP and ACT 20 and literacy screening is probably not going to jump up like that's where I'd want to spend my time. But you know, we do have a couple of people that support that process, but yeah.
Spend more time with them. That'd be great. No, they, they were awesome. The ones that, you know, are part of the coming back to help us out. Thank you out there because it really, we couldn't have done the screeners and diagnostic this time. So it was really helpful for them to come back and sign up to help us. So thank you. Thank you to all the subs who came.
So was the, the initial testing, did that go well? I mean, was that smooth, that initial first step on what, a couple of weeks ago? Was that?
I mean, look Lori, I went in front of a teacher and testing the students. So I, you know, for all of the elementary teachers that are watching at home, apologies if this isn't right, but yes. Um, I, I was amazed at, I, so I filled in at a first grade classroom, top first graders. Uh, it's a lot of fun. Uh, and as I was doing that, uh, one of the other first grade teachers came by. Now, mind you, we were just screening on this day. I was filling in so that, uh, the, the teacher could do screening. And that's the first step, remember? And, uh, as I was doing that, one of the other first grade teachers came by. I said, how's it going? She said, it's going great. I'm starting my diagnostics already. Like they were, they were just, they were just running, you know? Um, I think the work that these two, along with Pam Lenzmeyer did, supported by Diane, it was fantastic. But really at the end of the day, these, these, these teachers are, I just, I just can't thank them enough for the work. Um, it'll get better. It'll get, it'll get a, it a bit more seamless. We'll, we'll figure out how to enter data a little bit more cleanly and a little bit more efficiently. But for the first two times we've done it now, it's, it's been pretty good. So much so to the fact like, you know, we're going to, we're going to talk math a little bit later. Um, and we're thinking through the lens of how do we develop a system and a process that emulates what ACT 20 is doing for mathematics? And our, you know, the cool part is it's not the three of us asking for that. It's the teachers that are asking for that. So, yeah, it went really well.
Good. I'm trying to find like the silver lining. So I was happy to hear that. Um, are there any plans at all this summer to work on some of this process to try to fine tune it and get it to how you want it to look?
Um, well, we, we start ACT 20 training this summer. So teachers got that. Um, regardless of what the plan is, the human resources part is what we need. We need, we need people to support. We need an adult that's going to be assessing one-on-one outside of their classroom. Some of those assessments don't take a lot of time. So like Kyle was saying, I mean, some people got through their screenings and they're like, all right, these are my kids. I'm going to start doing my diagnostics. So I would say the amount of work that our classroom teachers have to put into it, the screening and the diagnostic part i- is not probably the big lift. The big lift is now we have our data. Now we got to write our PRPs. Now we got to design our interventions. We got to plan out our 10 weeks, what it looks like, and then we have to deliver that. So I would say probably that front part, doing the screening, the diagnostic. If they're supported well and we used every adult body that we could find to help support spaces at that time, that went really well. The work really starts once you get your results and figure out how am I going to deliver a personalized reading plan for them though.
I would also say that, um, that last day that we had on the calendar. Um, you know, one of the things that's going to happen is a second grader is going to become a third grader. And all the work that that second grade teacher did with that student, which is going to be really good work. We want that knowledge, expertise, we want that to transfer over to the third grade teacher. So one of the things we thought about is how then during one of those last days, do we get the teams together between grade levels? So that they can do the baton handoff very efficiently and effectively, right? So again, that takes time for them to be together to have those conversations. You talked about summer a little bit. Um, you know, Melanie's been working really hard with summer school to recruit staff, um, and be able to put together a system for our students who are going to be in need of summer school to get that because that it's actually part of ACT 22. We have to provide, um, a robust, um, systematic and explicit instruction in phonics in summer school for folks that, for students that are on this PR, on their PRPs yet. So we actually started that last year, a little bit of a pilot. Uh, this year it'll be a little bit more robust. And I will have very specific identifications and markers for students that do join us in the summer so that we can improve upon their performance.
Zach, did you want to chime in at all or did you, are you happy with?
Yeah, I think, I mean, most of you asked, asked the questions that I had as well. I brought up the points I was thinking too. So appreciate you three coming up and explaining and answering some of the questions I have already. So.
I got a few more questions, but I'll let you sit down because I see ACT 20 is coming up and a few more agenda items. So let you catch breath.
All right. So like we said, it's a first read. I'm glad, you know, we took a chance to share some thoughts on it. Mull it over some more. I mean, I personally, this is me speaking for myself. I'd be open to A day, a couple of half days. It was three full days. I just really had a hard time getting behind that amount of time. And it's, it is the families, but it's more of that's three more days that kids are not in school. Um, doing their school thing. And I, ACT 20, and I can't imagine that was the intent to take 420 districts and have three less days on their calendar. Maybe it was, but I, I have a hard time getting there. I, I would like to see some other options. But we got a couple of weeks and then we'll bring it back again and see where we're at. And this extra information from you guys was super helpful as always. So thank you.
Jen, as we go on to the next, uh, item, could we actually move, uh, Melanie up? Item E, so then she can present and then she doesn't have to stay.
Absolutely. Let's go to E, summer school courses.
Sorry, Melanie. I should have done that in the beginning.
Actually I kind of find it very fascinating because I have a first grader who is on the receiving end of all of the ACT 20 things. I don't have a whole lot to present to you today. We talked last time, um, with a lot of the information, just not go through the formal, hey, could you approve it step? Um, I, in front of you is the enrollment booklet cutoff where the English portion ends. It is fully translated. I just didn't think any of you wanted to read it in Spanish. However, you have the digital copies, both in board docs as a PDF and a Google doc. So it is there should you wish to, you know, explore your bilingual literacy. Um, much of this is very similar to past years. So like, um, dates are in there. The instructions and the IC portal are different links than what they're used to be. And we have them as a QR code. So if families can like zap it. If they don't, if they have a paper copy. Um, also it's hyperlinked, like you can literally click the QR code in the Google doc and it will like take you there like a hyperlinked photo. As well as like in that little mini paragraph on page, well, it says page one, but it's the backside of the cover. Um, you can get to them that way as well. Um, if you notice though, on the very top of the, like the backside of the cover, registration says March TBD. I'm tentatively hoping that we're going to be able to launch this, um, the Friday before spring break. Except remember we switched to IC this year. So everything has to be created from scratch. Like an entire summer school entity and calendar had to be created. All the hours have to be created. Kyle has to build like underwater basket weaving and diamond painting and whatever else. And then we got to add all of the sections in. So there's a lot of pieces that have to happen before I can go in and do my thing. So March TBD is the best I can do for this enrichment component, um, for right now. I'm really hoping to launch this mon, this monster before spring break starts, um, so that families have a good chunk of time to look at it. That'll give them about seven weeks because we're going to cut off registration again on, um, um, April 30th, which gave time for us to find the support that we needed for the students. Um, otherwise last, my first year I did not cut it off in time. I was like, oh, pish, pash, we're good. We were, we were good. Um, but I almost pulled out most of my hair and I have quite a few more gray hairs than looking for coverage and making sure all the pieces were in place. So this gives us the entire month of May, um, because we have a ton of student workers, right? So we can get all of their paperwork squared away, which can be stressful, um, chasing them down and getting them down to Lana to get all their paperwork signed in. And then we make sure that we have all of like the individual support people and the full classroom coverage completed. As well as all those background checks that need to be in for any of our employees that are not regular district employees. Um, a couple of things that will be before that though, so, um, during conferences for elementary, which is the week of the 10th of February. So like really soon, we will be launching Jump Start registration, which we talked about, which will be on paper again this year. I'm not really super thrilled about that paper, which I mentioned last week, two weeks ago. Sorry. I went to Rome for a week and honestly, everything was last week now. Um, weekend. It, it didn't work as well as I really thought it was going to. Um, kind of disappointed. We'll need to rethink that, but with the transition to IC this year, that was one more piece that I just didn't, I, we needed to go back to paper. Um, classroom teachers were able to better monitor from whom they received registrations. And in fact, many families just filled them right out during their conferences. Like they handed them like, here you go Jennifer, please fill this out for your daughter Suzie so she can go to Jump Start. And they had them right away as opposed to some people did it in the, the QR code. It was a Google form. And then some people needed paper and then I got like two, three, four registrations for some kids and it was less than successful. So we're going to go back to paper, rethink it. Um, Kristi and I have been talking. She's the summer school secretary for Jump Start. And how to make it better for next year, but this was not the year that we were going to be able to launch that with the IC transition. Also, we will be soliciting familial enrollment, um, consent for that ACT 20 or, or lit bootcamp. We have one teacher per grade level at this point, um, ish. If, if it turns out that we need to make adjustments like based on student need as opposed to grade level, we'll, we'll make that adjustment. But one teacher, four sections. So we'll have nice, um, classes of like eight to 12 is what I'm, I'm thinking. It should be no bigger than that. Um, and we'll have those put in before enrollment opens up to families. So that's already your placeholder. Like Sheila is going to be in ACT 10. Her mom said it's great. Yep. Or ACT 20, um, bootcamp. And we'll already have her in a second hour or wherever her schedule, wherever it needs to fit in, based on what her needs are. So that way that's already blocked out in IC. She's already scheduled for that. Then they have the other three hours to play with. So those are the only two things that we would want to launch then, um, during that week of elementary conferences. Otherwise, everything else is of a similar format to past years. Um, you've got your courses with the descriptions, again, fully translated in the Spanish version. Um, and then the little chart at the back saying, if you're in this grade, what can you take what hours as a quick reference? It's the same, hyperlinked on the digital copy on the third page, which is page two is the family handbook. Should you wish to read it? Very, very interesting reading. It's modeled very similarly after the high school one.
It's very nicely organized as always. Thank you. Unless there's discussion or more questions?
I just had something real quick. I probably asked you the same thing last year. Perhaps I'll ask you the same thing next year.
Sounds good.
Um, do you, I mean, all these courses will not be filled, right? Or will they?
Um, well, it depends. So some of them.
What's the mill they'll take before you say, we're not doing this?
You know, like so each class has its own like max capacity. So like Dungeons and Dragons, for example, has a smaller capacity than say basketball. Um, so they have max capacity set, uh, usually between 20 and 30 students, depending upon the nature of the class and the age group of the kiddos. I have that information. If you want specifics on that, I'd need to grab my computer because I have them written in, but like there is max capacity. We do have a minimum as well. The minimum is there needs to be, let me finish before anybody makes a face. At least two per section and an average of seven per section. So let's say Wendy is offering underwater basket weaving. Um, during first hour, she has four kids enrolled. During second hour, she has 10 kids enrolled. Add that together, it's 14 divided by two, it's seven and at least two in each section that class would run. Zach's offering, um, underwater basket weaving, three, eh, three kids signed up. That class would not go. We'd find a place to put Zach and have him still be supporting. So he wasn't missing out and the kids wouldn't be missing out on him. Makes sense? Sort of? Okay. Um, I, last year we did not need to do that. Everything had at least the minimum requirements. Um, sometimes though you get people who enroll and then they don't attend or they don't attend regularly, but we had at least the minimum required enroll, enrollees to make the classes run.
Cool. All right. We look for other questions or if there aren't any, we look for a motion to approve the summer school courses.
I'll make that motion to approve the summer school courses as presented.
I'll second. All right. Any more discussion? All right. If not, then all in favor of approving the 2025 summer school courses as presented, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're providing a lot of fun for those little kiddos this summer.
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping so. There's some pretty fun things planned. And we've got quite a few new classes, like, oh, like half of our art classes are new. Like the glow in the dark art. Like I'm, I'm excited. Art at the table. Like there's so many really nice things. And I like that we're having, um, a course that's extending what the students are doing before school at Clark, the, the junior raider athletics that Mr. Jansky is going over to do. Like that we're continuing it through summer, like very specifically part of that programming, which we've never done before, or at least not during my time. Um, so I'm pretty excited about that. I think the kids will be too. So, um, hoping like I said, for this to go to families' hands on the 14th of March. But again, it's, there's a lot of pieces that have to happen first. So we're working on it, but I, I don't know exactly how long it'll, it'll take. Cause we've got to get other pieces set up first. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all right. We could probably go to C then. I imagine that's Bridget. Okay. That's the space availability for open enrollment for the next school year.
All right. I'm just going to read directly from the paper just to make sure that all of the things that need to be said are said. Um, but it is that time of the year where we look at the number of students that we have in special education and then the amount of resources we have to support them for the upcoming school year in order to determine if we have space available in our programs to accept any open enrollment applications for students with disabilities from other districts. Um, at this time, the Two Rivers Public School District does not intend to set spacing needs when acting upon open enrollment applicant, applications for regular education applications. Um, setting of spaces for special education programs. So Wisconsin State statute permits a district to separately set spaces for special education programs irrespective of whether the district determines to set spaces for its regular education program. With respect to the district's special education programs, there exists a finite amount of spaces in such programs. Spaces are determined based on workload calculations for special education teaching staff. Workload takes into consideration the supports and services needed by each unique student, including both direct and indirect supports and is based on severity of student needs. The formula used for determining workload is total directed indirect minutes per week divided by 60 minutes in a week to give us the amount of hours per week. Hours per week times 36 weeks in a year equals total direct and indirect hours per year. And then you take that and you add the time spent on evaluations and reevaluations. Time spent creating IEPs and attending IEP meetings as well as prep time for a workload total. I then take the workload total and divide it by the total contracted hours per year, and that gives me an appropriate workload or FTE for that particular level. Um, spaces for occupational therapy, physical therapy and speech and language therapy are based on recommended caseload numbers. Caseload requirements for occupational therapists and physical therapists are in chapter PI 11 dot 24, Wisconsin Administrative Code. And the minimum caseload for a full-time therapist is 15 students. The maximum caseload for a full-time therapist is 30 students. But with a licensed assistant can reach 45 students. A maximum caseload of 35 is the recommended caseload for speech and language therapists. The formula for determining the caseload was maximum recommended caseload, which I just shared, times the number of staff would give us the capacity. And then the capacity minus the minimum projected enrollment would equal available spaces in each program. If the projected caseload and/or workload for any special education teacher or related service provider is below caseload recommendations set by the district, then space will be available to provide that specific type of special education or related services up to that workload or caseload recommendation. For projected enrollment, our workload is at or higher than the caseload and our workload recommendation, there will be no space available to provide that type of special education and related service and the program is closed for the next school year. Procedures for processing of special education, open enrollment applications if there's space. So if there are more applicants in space, the board will fill the available spaces by a random selection process with preference given to currently attending applicants and siblings of currently attending students. Applicants given preference may not be approved if there is no remaining space available. So if you look on the other side, um, what I do is I go through every single IP. Um, and I look at the minutes, um, of special education services provided to those students, um, for every building. Um, so based on that workload analysis and those formulas I just stated, um, it looks like for the upcoming. like for the upcoming school year, we would be in need of two, um, FTEs at early childhood and 4K level, and our projected FTEs right now are at two, which would mean that program is closed. Elementary, um, both buildings, FTEs needed, um, based on workload analysis is five, and our projected FTEs for that level will be five, and the program is closed. Middle school, we have a projected FTE of nine, or FTEs needed is nine, and a projected FTE of seven, um, which would indicate that program is also closed. High school, we have, um, seven FTEs needed with a projected FTEs of seven, which means program is closed. And then Lighthouse Learning Academy, we have, um, one FTE needed with a projected FTE of one, meaning that our program is closed at that level. Um, for our related services, occupational therapy, we have one full-time occupational therapist and a full-time certified occupational therapist assistant, so that would give us, um, 45 for the recommended caseload, and we are at 49 for next school year, which would mean that program is closed. Um, physical therapy, um, starting February 3rd and into next year, we will have a part-time physical therapist and a full-time physical therapy assistant, which is great because we did not have that role filled the first half of the year, um, but based on that, we would have, um, a maximum of 23 with a physical therapy assistant, and we are at 27, so that program is closed. Speech and language, um, given the numbers, had to allocate our FTEs a little differently, um, would allocate a .3 FTE right now at the early childhood level, which would give us a max 11, and we are at 11, so the program would be closed. Um, 2.7 at the elementaries, um, max caseload of 35, projected FTE is 47, which would be program closed, and then a speech and language at the secondary level with a max of 35, and we would currently be at 40 with the program closed, closed, and I would also, um, state that we have had that position open, um, for probably at least a year, um, with two applicants we interviewed and chose not to, um, come to us, so we have our speech and language therapists right now taking an overload, um, and servicing very high caseloads in order to get those kids services, um, throughout the year. So not only do we have, um, have we met the, um, maximum caseload, um, we are also operating short of speech and language therapists this year, um, fingers crossed that, um, when we have some new graduates and their new year starts, we have some people to choose from, um, but also, um, understanding that when closing programs, especially related to speech and language pathologists.
So then, as far as open enrollment is concerned, if we are not open enrollment, is there-
Correct.
And over.
And as an example with like an occupational therapy, I'm familiar with the, the elementary, does the, um, elementary person just service the elementary, or are they-
Nope, they service district-wide, occupational and physical therapy, um, and those are related services, so they typically, well, they do come out in IEP for another, that's not the primary disability area, they're often in addition to that primary disability, or they are in addition to that primary disability.
Just a clarification to, um, open enrollment for regular education students is open, it's just students with, uh, special, with IEPs.
Okay. I think I've only ever seen it closed because there's more need than we have available. Do you, is there, um, does CISA or does someone provide a little extra boost of support in any of these areas, like a-
Uh, we do contract with CISA for, um, our visually impaired, um, for our hearing impaired students, orientation and mobility, we contract through, um, Pat Gaffney, who has a business that we work through, and he's, I worked with him when I was in the classroom in Manitowoc, and he's supported our district in the past, so we do contract for low incident, uh, low incidence disabilities through CISA to make sure that those things are covered.
Okay, what about like speech, language, like we can't seem to find anybody yet, but do they offer any?
Um, we can work through private companies for that, it's super expensive, so when, you know, in, in gathering with the speech and language therapists, if they were able to find a way to, um, put that into their time, I mean, it is in addition to what they already are doing, um, they have familiarity with the students and how our district operates, so it just made a little bit more sense to, um, have them do that and give them an overload.
One can only overload so many ears, is, you know, kind of what we're thinking, like-
Correct.
What's the relief for them until someone is-
Yeah.
So we are approving that there's no space availability for open enrollment for IEPs and, um, special education services?
Correct.
And then approving open enrollment for regular education students, that first paragraph.
Which is, open enrollment is open.
Correct.
So there's not a space limit on that, and then as Bridgette described, and as in Board Ducks, there are no open spaces for, um, IEPs and special, special needs. Does that sound accurate?
Correct.
All right, so that would be the motion we would look for then, to approve the open, open enrollment status, and then the no space avail, availability for IEPs and special service needs.
I'll make the motion to approve the open enrollment, and then the closure, I guess, of the IEPs and special education.
All right, so motion and second to approve the open, open enrollment.
For regular education.
Regular education.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, um, no space avail, no space availability for IEPs and special services, open enrollment students, based on the caseloads and FTEs and projections. Thank you, so.
Thank you.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thanks Bridgette. So, uh, it looks like last thing under new business then is the 2025-26 ACP plan.
So, um, Lisa Klein and Jim Dahl were unable to be here tonight, so, um, I'm going to present the information to you, and if you end up having questions and we need to table this, we can do this, if you feel comfortable, then we can move forward with approving the ACP plan. Um, this is, uh, approved every year, um, as required by law. So the first, uh, part of the plan, um, the school district demographics, um, shows that we have, uh, some, at this time of the writing, had 1,712 students, um, it tells you how many elementary students, middle school and high school students, as well as, um, how many students are at the lighthouse, and outlines, uh, 26% minority students and approximately 42% economically disadvantaged students. You'll see the, um, school mission and vision statement, I won't read that to you. You'll see that an analysis of, uh, the local market, um, shows that, um, districts for career and technical education programs are uncovering skills for students of the future. Um, Lisa provided a graph in there, um, graph five, showing the statistics for employment in industry in Manitowoc County, with the three top employment industries being manufacturing at 28.8%, education and health sciences at 18.7%, and trade, transportation, and utilities at 18.4%. Again, that's Manitowoc County. Part of the, um, expectation for, um, career, uh, the plan, um, is to engage families. So Lisa and Jim have shared, uh, different ways that families are engaged with the plan. Uh, families are informed, um, each year, what academic and career planning services are available to their students, they provide opportunities for the parents to participate in the planning, they update parents throughout the school year on the progress of their child's academic and career planning, um, they, during, uh, parent teacher conferences, they, um, offer the ability to meet with, um, ACP teachers, um, they have the ability to conference at other times, and then we also have junior academic and career goal meetings with counselors, parents, and students. The ACP curriculum support and services, um, students participate in Zello and Inspire Wisconsin, um, students are able to receive counseling services for ACP, uh, they attend expos, juniors and, um, and seniors attend the reality store, that happens every other year, eighth grades visit technical colleges, we have required courses at the middle school focusing on ACP components, and we assess, uh, formal procedures and processes for connecting pupils to teachers, um, with the ACP plan. And then you'll see, um, Lisa has connected, uh, post-secondary and workforce preparation, there are 30-plus career and technical education courses for students, um, to be able to participate in, in our school district, 15 courses that provide advanced standing and, uh, transcripted credit with Lake Shore College, college preparation with the Rising Phoenix, Phoenix Program through UW Green Bay, as well as classes through UW Oshkosh, and work-based learning through youth apprenticeship. The ACP plan, uh, also, uh, has professional development for staff, so at the high school level, teachers are trained on how to use Zello, there's professional development on the planning for kids grade six through 12, and at the middle school, the staff are trained in curriculum and tools necessary to implement requirements. There's a community partnership, um, we have over 100 businesses that are part of our collaboration, I think when we wrote our, um, strategic plan back in June, there were 70 partners, so we've grown 30 partners, um, already this school year. Much of that is due to the work that Lisa does in the community along with our CISA six partnerships. Students are able to, um, access individual I support, and it's access for all students. Um, for, um, current progress and future goals, the district continues to provide 25 courses offering dual credits, again, at Green Bay, Oshkosh, Lake Shore College. In 25-26, um, we're adding another math course, that algebra to intermediate math, um, algebra, excuse me, for dual credit. Uh, future goals related to improving pupil post-secondary outcomes include continuing to meet with institutions of higher learning to increase dual credit offerings, increase our student participation in work-based learning, and that includes youth apprenticeship, career-based learning, and work experience. And then she also, um, included a link to Zello, so you can see what that looks like. I shouldn't just say she, she and Jim, both of them. Um, Lisa has done presentations for you in the past on youth apprenticeship and work-based experiences, we've had, um, students come and share their experiences, um, it is a, it's a big program for Two Rivers, and it just keeps growing, which is really, really awesome.
It is great, it's really vibrant here, and I, we're way over the state average on participation in those things, so that's one of our things we're super proud of.
The other person, uh, Jamie, who works for CISA six, she's in the district, uh, one time a week, um, she is also really, uh, instrumental in growing, uh, our programs.
Great, well, this looks very familiar, it's, we're from previous years, any questions or concerns on it? I like they include, I like future goals or things, maybe some new major businesses or a new school or some more classes, it's always good to keep looking for new things.
I believe there are, it's either 12 or 13 youth apprenticeship areas that kids can go into, two of those were just added this last year, education being one of them, and I believe, um, EMS and paramedics was added as well this last year, so they, the state also continues to grow opportunities for kids in different areas of, of specialty.
That's great, uh, the education one is particularly nice, because we gotta think hard about recruiting and-
We need good people.
Very good, so unless there's other questions or comments, I'd look for a motion to approve the next year's ACP plan?
Make a motion to approve the 25-26 ACP plan.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor of approving next year's ACP plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you Diane, thank you Lisa and Jim out there. And I believe that's the end of new business for tonight. So then we've got Kyle, Dana, and Chad with some administrator updates.
All right, so Tim was asking before on winter literacy screening results, so we're just gonna give you a quick, hopefully overview, where am I clicking this loop other than, there we go, there's a spot, yeah, off the wall back there. So just a quick reminder of that process, we talk about that 10-day window that we have, we do the universal screening, um, they take that Ames Web Plus screener, um, 4K students take it in the fall and the spring, K3 take it fall, winter, and spring. After you go through the screening process, then you gotta look at that diagnostic piece, so if you score below the 25th percentile, and the sp, specific areas, identify the state, then you have to administer additional state-approved diagnostics, um, and then also, if additional diagnostic information is needed for students who score, um, identify with the list to administer, so we have a list of those that our staff are able to use. We get into that PRP writing plan, uh, must be developed for all K through three students who score below 25th percentile, charting the areas of needs identified by the screener and the diagnostic of the assessment. Once that plan is written, then the progress monitoring and the intervention piece comes in, so you need to monitor that weekly, um, we're gonna use Ames Web Plus, um, for some of those things, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about what some of those data pieces look like, some of our results, uh, and our current reality where we are today.
Chad, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
The TRPSD diagnostic, what is that more specific, I'm not sure if I understood what that is versus the diagnostic up before that, that was DPI approved, the middle column? If additional-
Yeah, so the state, the state puts out some of their approved diagnostics, if there's more that we need to dig into, then we would do some local diagnostics, so, the DPI says, here are the diagnostics that you can use, if there's something that we wanna get to or get more information on, we have some diagnostics that we can also use at, at the local level.
Anything that you have to develop?
No, no, it's just additional, additional di, additional diagnosing.
And could you just tell me what an example of that would be?
So, you come out of the screening process, you, you identify a deficit area, and then the diagnostics would be specific assessments related to that deficit area, so it just gives you more information, so Kyle does the, the, um, blood pressure and, uh, what's your analogy?
Blood pressure, blood draw.
Blood pressure, blood draw, so, blood pressure is at the beginning, your diagnostics is your blood draw, getting a little bit deeper into it.
Thank you.
Any student below the 25th percentile gets the blood draw, that's the diagnostic for us, Ames Web. If the Ames Web diagnostic doesn't provide us with enough information, let, let's say, um, we believe that it's got something to do with decoding, and it's a decoding issue, and so, you know, we, we, we apply the diagnostics that the state is telling us we need to do, and if that's not giving us, uh, us enough information, we can go one further. We chose to use the resources actually inside Really Great Reading, which is our phonics curriculum, and there's two different tests, there's what's called the BDS, Beginning Decoding Survey, and the ADS, the Advanced Decoding Survey, and those are the two assessments then that are given to students, and then from that, they really, they really drill down even further, so it's almost, I don't even, I'm not a doctor, so I don't know what comes after blood draw, but it's whatever that is, so. Uh, winter screening results, so, we've got all five, um, of our screened grade levels here, now understand 4K is not up here, they will be up here in the spring, but they're not up here right now, so we have the total number of students tested in each grade level, this does include the Lighthouse Learning Academy, so it's 580 total tested students. We had 238 students flag, for a percentage of 41% of our students will, uh, be on personalized reading plans. Uh, number of alternate tested students, that's- Number of alternate tested students, that's ten total. Now, an alternate tested student may be a student who is nonverbal. So if you think of a student who is nonverbal doing an oral reading fluency is not a good way to measure whether or not they can read. Because a student can be nonverbal and still be quite a good reader, but they just can't read to you orally. But they, they know what the words are saying. So that's what those other ten alternative tested students are. One thing that I think is interesting when you do look at this graph is you will see that percentage. You start in Kinder, and then you work your way down. You see the percentage increases to, from thirty-seven point six percent, once again, to that forty-six point nine percent in the fourth grade. Again, I don't, I don't think it's short-sighted. There's really two big reasons, I think. Number one, those third, fourth grade students, they did not get explicit and systematic decoding instruction in phonics. So what we're seeing in those levels, we've got a lot of sight readers, okay? So they might be able to read, but they're reading using sight words. They can't decode the trickier words. So they may even be a really good reader at that level, but they can't go ahead and they can't decode. If they can't decode, they don't have the ability to comprehend the text that they're reading when it's at a higher grade level. So we really have to teach them the skills. Great thing that we have Really Great Reading going in the fourth grade right now, because obviously our data is showing that we need it. The other thing I would say, I don't think we, can be lost on us, I mean, it's four years ago now, but it, it was still in the past, right? When those fourth graders were in kindergarten, they were reading how to read like this. Okay? Like, that's what their teachers were doing. So when you learn how to make sounds, if you go into a first-grade classroom right now, on the wall, if you look on the wall, there's a sound wall, and there's pictures of the sounds, like when you do the ch sound for chip, ch, ch. Like, there's a picture on the wall, right? So seeing the mouth formation of that sound, like, watch Amy Gallagher, Kate Dorner, right? Any one of our speech-language paths, right? Angela Pot, they will, they will do that sound with the students. Well, they couldn't see that, right? So that was one thing that they were really missing, that early education. So makes sense that those numbers are higher, and we wanna see them come down. We did see some nice gains. Kinder had a thirty-four-point gain overall, average gain from fall to winter. First grade fourteen points, eighteen-point gain on that, on that score from, in the second grade. Twelve points in the third grade, and only two points in the fourth grade. And, you know, I look at that right away, and I say, okay, so why, and then what can we do? And fourth grade's already taken on the challenge of saying, all right, let's, let's rally up. Because remember, they're not, they're not guarded by Act Twenty, right? They, they don't have Act Twenty implications on them, but they're still saying, no, no, we, we have to improve on these scores. So they're a small group in their students, identifying the skill deficit. They're teaching specifically to that skill deficit, and they're looking to improve that score. So even though it's still, it's still an improvement. And, go ahead. Yeah.
One more?
Yep, go.
I'm just curious, are you, were you surprised by that, Kyle, when we got these results?
Uh, I was surprised, surprised in the fall. I had no idea, because in the fall, I, I, I didn't, I had no idea what our, what our numbers would be. So seeing the numbers in that forty percent range in the fall was a little bit higher than forty percent was that, yep. I thought that that's where they would, I didn't know that that's where they would be. In the winter, I wasn't surprised. The, the test, in essence, it gets a bit more difficult as the year goes on. The skill score gets a bit more difficult, so it's harder to not have a PRP in the winter. It's gonna be harder to not have a PRP in the spring, right? Because you're going further along in your school year. So I wasn't surprised with these numbers, given where we were at with our, with our forward assessment, where we're at right now, where our students were at. That didn't surprise me at all. Right now, forty-six point six percent of our third graders were proficient or advanced in ELA. Forty-six point six percent, that's it. So I don't think those numbers were too far off.
And these are below the twenty-fifth percentile, is that correct?
Correct. So the, if you look at your total, forty-one point zero percent of our students are below the twenty-fifth percentile. I don't have neighboring district comparisons. I wish I did. I usually always like to do that, because, you know, right now, it's, uh, where, where is that? I can do that with the Ford exam. I can do that with the ACT, but this isn't shared data yet with the state, so I don't have any shareable data.
Okay. I just, I was wondering if that surprised you, just based on the years you've been here and the scores and knowing the kids. You might have been able to predict kinda how many would fall in this.
No. Looking at our forward scores from last year for a third-grade group, which is obviously now our fourth-grade students, fits along with what we had seen. I was surprised, actually, that the first grade, which I, I kinda think is, is one of the trickier areas, because they're doing the ORF, Oral Reading Fluency, already in first grade. So I really kind of expected that number to be a little bit higher, but it's actually our lowest. So did a nice job there, I thought. But where do you want the numbers, right? Well, here's what I'd say, like, if you have a good process, if you have good tier-one instruction, eighty percent or more of your students should be responding. And so that means that we'd like to see the number forty-one percent down below twenty percent, right? That's what we're shooting for. And then I just wanted to provide an idea as to how we collect data and monitor it. I'll work from left to right, the very left side. You don't see student names, but we do have identified the services that they are provided. Then you see their universal screening score in the fall. That's the colorful column, the first colorful column on the left. That next column provides the diagnostic that we gave the student. We chose a singular diagnostic at that time. It shows their score, so for the student at the very top, they took the NWF, or nonsense word fluency. Shows their score of a seventy-two. Now, that score's pretty high. It doesn't tell us a lot. So Lori, to your point, that's where we had to go to that step three. That's where it says BDS and ADS. Those were the Really Great Reading assessments, so that we could dig down further. Remember, in the fall, we were, we were not required to do this assessing. So you'll notice that in the sprint, or in the winter, we got a little bit more specific. That same student at the very top has an ORF score of a three. This brings them, and that is the thing that classifies them, so they are under the twenty-fifth percentile. Then you also see their oral vocabulary and their reading comprehension scores at the top. And then where it says RAN, R-A-N, that's rapid automatized naming. How quickly can they name shapes or colors? Learn, uh, listening comprehension, right, and then spelling. And then once again, you see this student, we did perform a BDS and an ADS with the student to dive down and get even more information. This is just how we're warehousing and collecting data, so that we can see changes along the time. And we can look at this data wall right now with the name attached to the student on the far right and the teacher, and that's how we can group our groups. Right? If we have sixteen students in the classroom, not all sixteen of them need own individual needs. We might be able to pair up students two, three, six, eight, and nine to do a small group, where we use this data wall to help us with that. Any questions about the winter screening window?
I just have a question with what you just said. So if you've got a group, a small group of students that are deficit in one area, but it's three different class, sorry, three different classrooms. Are they, like, one teacher taking all those students from those three different classrooms?
Yeah, so check this out. Ready for this?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, ready? Kenech, right? We got an elementary, we got a classroom at Kenech Kinder. There are exactly zero students that have a PRP. Okay, so every single student in that kindergarten classroom is above the twenty-fifth percentile. That's awesome, right? That's, woo, celebrate. Okay, so there's two other Kinder teachers. So there's three total Kinder teachers at Kenech. Now, that one Kinder teacher with no students on the PRP could have said, all right, you two have fun. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over here, hang out. But that's not how it works, right? That teacher, I'm gonna call her by name, Susan Robbiss, right? She sits down with the other two Kinder teachers, and they work as a team. Okay, so Susan's writing PRPs, and she's putting data into the data wall. And Larissa and Trisha are working together, and they're working in concert with each other. And then they're saying, right, okay, I might not have any students that are below the twenty-fifth percentile, but I can still help. So how can we divide and conquer? I'll take some of your kids at this time. You take some of my kids back. And that's how they're building these little groups. And I think the next step is probably to figure out a little bit of when some of that sharing i- is happening. But that's the conversations that they're, they're trying to have right now. It's probably what they would have done on the afternoon on Friday, I'm assuming, had they had the time.
Yeah, that's that, that planning piece, too. When you get the PRP, you create the document, and then that's the, the planning piece that you need to talk about. You gotta get your neighbors together. You gotta look at this, where are our needs that are similar? How can we group them? How can we service them? And that's, that's like every week, you're doing that. You know, you gotta, at the end of the week, you gotta assess them, and maybe you gotta regroup, maybe you gotta, you know, move some kids around, so.
And just real quickly, remember it's on apples-to-apples right now, because last year we had STAR. And we didn't drill down like this, because the reports didn't let us do that. So at least with something like Ames Web, we can do that, and hopefully we stick with that, so that we can carry our data over time and actually have a fair comparison to what we were doing.
Thank you.
Sorry, so I had another question or two for you that I was saving, for any one of you. For those out there that keep hearing PRP, and we keep hearing PRP, just give me an example. Make something up. What does it look like? What, you know, I have some reading deficiency. Make it up. What are you gonna do with me? You gonna write something up? What's it look like?
Okay, so fourth grade, for example, doesn't have to do PRPs, but I will tell you, they are still writing PRPs, even though they don't have to. So they met together, and they went through, and let's say they were doing letter name fluency or something with a group. They would then have that intervention for four days a week, and they would be doing activities that are research-based around letter name fluency. And it has to fall on that research-based intervention list. Then what they have to do is weekly, do the ORF, the Oral Read Fluency, to see if that letter name fluency is, can actually be applied in the fluency of reading. So then they have to do a one-minute, they're timed, and have to read within that one minute, okay? It's getting better. We do it next week again, same group, because we know there's progress. We have to monitor that over time. If not, then they have to change the intervention that they're doing to something else that's working. And again, they have to do it within three to five students, or less than three to five students. So they can't be bigger than that, or that is not research-based.
Intervention being, we're gonna sit these kids down and do something?
In small group that is research-based, yes. An activity that falls within, it could be a high-leverage routine, and that's a whole nother animal we're not gonna even get into. But another routine that is research-based that would work with that small group. But again, they can't have more than five kids to make it user-friendly for them and impactful. So these, these will rotate and be flexible groups. So if Lori and I are first-grade teachers, and we have kids that have the same need, we are gonna share those kids. And then I'm gonna do the Oral Read Fluency with them every week to see what I'm doing is working or not. And it's a one-minute, even though it seems like not a lot, if I have eight in my group, I have to do eight minutes of time every week with that student.
And kids would not be out from underneath the PRP until the following screening?
Correct.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Let's hope so.
Well, that's what I mean, intervention, intervention, intervention. You can't just say, you're good.
Right.
We gotta wait till you get screened again.
And that's why I appreciate grade four right now, because even though they don't have to, we created a form, a Google form for them, took the same components essentially in step six and seven, intervention and progress monitoring, and they're like, yep, let's do it, obviously. So they're doing that same situation in grade four, small groups, and then going ahead and doing the Oral Read Fluency, one-minute progress monitoring weekly with those kids.
We could pull a PRP out and take the child's name off, and we can show, I can send you an example of what one looks like.
Sure.
Yep.
To the board.
And just so you know, there's, what, four hundred and twenty-four school districts, Diane? Four twenty-two?
Uh, twenty-one.
Four twenty-one. And I don't know if anyone's got any more information, but our superintendent has been administering these assessments with some of our Lighthouse kids. So Diane's been in there. That's when we say we're pulling everybody we can. Diane's been on her computer doing some virtual PRP and diagnosing and screening, so, yeah, so she's getting some, getting some pretty good screen timing.
And learning about violin lessons and listening to kids yell at their brothers, which was entertaining.
All right, shifting gears, elementary math updates. Our mantra is developing fearless mathematicians. So Kyle kind of alluded to it before. We've had this conversation. We've known we've had some really heavy lifting with Act Twenty that we're right in the middle of this year. Our contract with math expressions expires at the end of this current school year. So we have to move in a direction that we are going to have our math curriculum in place for next school year. So we're gonna talk a little bit about our, our path. So just this current school year, we'll go through the steps that we've gone through so far, and kind of talk about where we're at right now. So back in September, we looked at criteria for curriculum review. We narrowed down the vendors to three options, math expressions, which is our current curriculum that we have in place, illustrative math, and bridges. The October and November timeline, we connected with each of the vendors for an overview of the materials within the curriculum. So we invited those vendors, either virtually in person, to come in and give us the best spiel that they had, so we could put some hands on their product, and we gave them an opportunity to give us that sales pitch, as that's the business that they're in. We went up to Dan's Elementary, I think it was mid to late November, to view bridges in action. So that was really cool to just take one of these products. You know, you can have a salesman tell you everything about it, but go to a school that's actually using it. Our Dan's Elementary visit was pretty cool. Getting into that December timeframe, math team members reviewed and revised evaluation rubric to be used for the final review. So as we're talking about the different options that we have, we had our rubric that we kind of revised, got that ready to go. Our team members knew that every one of them was gonna be doing an evaluation rubric on each of the vendors. And then in January, and actually, I think we were trying to get it done in December, and calendars were just colliding, and we just could not get. We were trying to get over to Appleton to do some site visits. And somebody had a great idea. I'll give Kyle a credit. I don't know if it was his idea or not, but they did some virtual videos for us. So an elementary school in Appleton filmed lessons within their classrooms and shared them with us, and so we were able to watch those lessons. Create a question bank for them, and then they took some time one day, like eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty during their lunch break, and we were able to zoom with those teachers and talk to them and get our questions answered from them. So it was just the same as doing a site visit, but we're able to make logistics work and, and get Fox River Academy in Appleton. They came out last year and did some wit and wisdom visits with us, Appleton, so I think we got to call one in and say, hey, how about you do us a favor and get some math videos going for us? So our math teams did complete those rubrics for all three resources, and working towards that final recommendation, which will be coming forward on February tenth. Here are the curriculums. Mr. Cornick is going to give a brief overview of the three that we took a look at.
So our math task force at the elementary school consisted of members from all grade levels, with the exception of fourth grade. But we did converse with them with some needs later through the process. We had a total of nine members on that task force, including special education and four K. Again, the three curriculum that we did vet, bridges and mathematics, illustrative mathematics, which we're currently using grades five through eleven, and then math expressions, which we've used for the past decade or so. You can see that all three of the curriculum are highly ranked on ed reports. And so they, they meet all the classifications, so that was a, a nice opportunity for us to say, all right, we're working in, working kind of the, a good ballpark for each one of these curriculum. We did build a math evaluation rubric, and this rubric comes from multiple different sources. So the National Council of Teaching Mathematics, NCTM, along with Oklahoma High Quality Instructional Materials Resources, achieved the core and core learning materials. So all four, five of those entities, we took, brought those together, and we built a rubric that had multiple different areas. So as you can see, the top area here is alignment with our Wisconsin mathematics standards. That secondary area is learning progressions and coherence, and we had multiple areas below that. Each one of our team members took these documents, they had three of them, one for illustrative, one for bridges, and one for expressions. And they went through all the curriculum materials that we had at our disposal, because these vendors were great. They came in, they gave us materials, they gave us the online resources and materials, and we were able to just pour through all of those things, ask a ton of questions. So our team came in, and they were able to overview that. We also were, we were able to find a ton of stuff on the internet, resources for us to identify whether or not these were valid resources. And if identify whether or not these were valid resources, and if they did hit some of these points, we pulled those for the staff. Uh, the title of this slide is a link, and so if you were to click the Math Curriculum Evaluation Rubric, you will see that, uh, that full rubric there. So it definitely wasn't a, um, it wasn't an overnight process. This is a, a, a year-long process, uh, and more, um, for us to kind of get to this point. Does anybody have questions about us getting, uh, getting here, about how we got here? Okay, will Chad take us home?
All right, one slide to go. Um, so the curriculum that we'll be bringing to the Board of Education is Bridges. It's an inquiry-based and student-centered, Bridges focuses on developing mathematical reasoning while creating an inclusive and equitable learning community for all students. If you take a look at that diagram, uh, up on the screen, um, procedural fluency, that's where you're memorizing, you're performing, you're kind of input-output type of thing. We really wanna take a look at the, the graphic to the right of that. We want procedural fluency, but we also wanna make sure that we have those other components to have that balanced math instruction. So conceptual understanding and problem solving are two components that you also need to have in order to have that balanced math instruction. So the link here, I think it's the, it's either the Bridges up on the very top, or it's the, um, logo down in the bottom right is a link that'll take you to the Bridges website. Our intention tonight was just to give you the information about this is what we're gonna be presenting in two weeks from our math committee. So we'll have some members of the math team here, um, to go through that process with you. But we thought between now and two weeks from now, if you wanna dive on their website and take some, take a look at some of the materials, that you could take a look at it. Any questions on the math journey?
Does this mean no more core math?
We don't have the control at the national level, I'm sorry.
I think I remember you mentioning at a previous meeting, all three of these translate well to illustrative math at the middle school and high.
Yeah, so, uh, Plymouth has been a nice thought partner for us. Um, and they came to watch our, uh, Wit and Wisdom and ELA a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Plymouth has Bridges at the elementary level and they have illustrative at the middle level. So, um, they said that transition is fantastic, um, it really builds on that, um, procedural fluency. And that was the one thing I think that we were a little bit worried about with illustrative at the elementary schools, was that the procedural fluency didn't seem as rich or robust. Um, really good for in-depth knowledge, the DOK is definitely there, but getting students to really understand multiplication, division, subtraction, addition, and being able to do that quickly, um, just seemed to be a, a lot richer, uh, with the Bridges curriculum.
Teacher, right?
Yeah.
So it...
Long time ago, Lori, so be careful what you're asking.
No, I just, being that you already have that math experience, I mean, this, I'm on board with this.
Yeah, so we, we had math expressions for two cycles, two licenses. Um, and we know our results aren't where they need to be. And so we can't continue with that resource and expect that in the next two to three years, miraculously, something is gonna change and we're gonna get better results. So this process was really interesting to go through. Um, I appreciated the visits, whether they were virtual or in person, um, because flipping through a book, you know, they can have all of the sales pitches that they're trying to sell you, but to see districts that are using it. Um, and so this is another part of that PD planning for next year, when we look at those days on the calendar. Um, we're gonna have some summer dates, teachers are gonna have to come in for Bridges in, in addition to their Act Twenty training, and then when we have those in-service days, it's gonna be pretty heavy on the math focus for next year to get up and running, so.
Before you guys go, you have a math question?
Yep.
Do it, I got one more reading question.
And maybe you guys mentioned it and I just didn't hear you, but how long does this, the Bridges contract or the?
Yeah, Kyle's the, he's the contract negotiator, so.
Yeah, that's my least favorite part of the job. Uh, so, interestingly enough, uh, Math Learning Center, who's the publisher for Bridges, doesn't, uh, they, they have their initial cost, so every curriculum has an initial startup, because there are manipulatives and things that you're gonna get. Then after that, you have student workbooks that you usually get. Well, um, this particular resource doesn't have a two, three, four, five, six year. It just, they go one year at a time. It's kind of interesting, when I asked them, uh, why they do that, they said, well, a couple of reasons. First of all, we, we do alter our editions, so they're currently in edition two, the second edition. They're, we are gonna get edition three, the third edition. And they said that because of the transitions that we have, we don't want people stuck with old editions. And we also don't want people like in mid-cycle, when they've got a ton of student workbooks sitting with them. They've got the old edition and all of our stuff online's the new edition. So they just go year by year by year. I, I was wondering a little bit about that as, you know, from a financial side, you know, wouldn't you wanna lock a district in into multiple years? And I think it was kind of cool, and, and her response, she said, uh, we know we're pretty good, so we're pretty confident you're gonna come back, so.
So then is there a cost every year?
There's a cost every year, so it'd be similar to expressions, has a cost annually, um, right now, so we're sim- and similar in that, but Wit and Wisdom has an annual cost, we're, we're doing it there. Most curriculum have a cost every year, but again, your first-year cost, that's, yeah, it's your big buy, and then after that, you're just sustaining.
So comparable to what we're paying now?
I, I don't, that I don't know, that's what I'll bring you in a couple of weeks. Um, I have to get all the quotes and all the numbers and I'm thrilled to do that for you, Gary, it's a lot of fun.
I just had one last reading question for you guys. Obviously, we haven't mentioned it yet, but I feel like we should, is with reading, math, whatever, we can always use parents' help. Right? Like a lot of this stuff can't be done during the day. We could really, like, we talk about practicing, name your sport or ex- great, it can't happen two hours a week at practice. What are we doing to say, to, to parents, say, hey, listen, we could use your help more than ever at home because of Act Twenty and all of this stuff, you know, I mean, we're gonna be doing our screenings and our interventions and all this stuff, but man, it would really be helpful if you could spend half hour, whatever the number is, with your kid.
Right, so section, section seven of the PRP is just that. You have to put all the parent components in there, and then when it gets sent out at four-thirty on a Friday, parents are supposed to acknowledge that, to say they've read it. You can still implement the plan, um, it doesn't have to be, I acknowledge that my student's going to get this, and if I don't acknowledge it, it won't get this. However, in there, we do list all of the things. One being, reading to your kid from birth to three, right? Getting books into the kids' hands and that oral language. Talking with your kids is first, speaking and listening is for the first groundwork for reading. So the more you talk to your, your kids, the more you read to your kids, the more you have conversation. That's what we need, and we really need to hammer into our Birth to Three programs and how important that work is. And that takes the 4K program, talking with Birth to Three, talking to us, and vice versa. But again, the PRP, part seven. Also use every opportunity you can, we are pretty close to a hundred percent on our parent-teacher conferences. So we've been very intentional about making sure we get this information and communicate it out. We have a very good communication plan, I think, in terms of parents, I mean, you're, you're a parent. How we got the Act Twenty information out, how we got the PRP, how we got the RGR. Using your resources at home, I know that some people don't have access to technology, but you can access the phonics in the playground at home and practice with your child. Um, so those couple of things, and then on top of that, be involved. Ask questions, ask what you can do to help, because it is everybody's responsibility. And it is a collective, um, whole that we need to make this happen, so thank you for asking that question.
I think there's even one more step.
Did I miss something?
Yes.
I'm sure I did.
Um, I was talking to Terry Ale, we had a meeting together. This team has gone to the library and said, these are the type of books that we need you to purchase in the library, so they are available for students. So what Terry's doing is she's taking a look at the types of books like RGR is doing, and she's purchasing those for the library, so parents can check them out.
So thank you, team. Yep. At the concerts, celebrate RGR, send out the passwords again, that's what I did. Right, Kyle? Use every chance you can.
All right, finally Diane.
Okay, you know how much I love the WASB convention. It is so awesome, and I really wanna push on you that if you have an opportunity to attend next year, it's always that same weekend, even if it's from Wednesday to Thursday, or just Wednesday, or just Thursday, or just that half-day Friday, come, because it is so good. So, um, I just wanna give you a feel for, for some of the opportunities, the learning opportunities that were there. There are about, uh, if you can picture, it's the Baird Center downtown. There are about a thousand people there, so, you know, I've had people, I'm like, are you here? I, I text a couple of different superintendents, 'cause you don't even see them, because there's so darn many people and so much space. So, um, one of the first ones I attended was Community Engagement Momentum and Success Panels. Uh, they talked about the Hamilton School District, talked about ways to engage in the community. This is a cool idea. Um, they have something called the Golden Ager's Pass. So if you're at a certain age, probably like sixty-three or sixty-five and above, um, people in the community get into events for free. And I'm like, that would be really cool for us to do, to have this Golden Ager Pass. The other thing they talked about is, um, uh, on their website, um, they have how to read a tax bill. So you think about when people get their tax bill once a year, they might not know exactly how to read it. So putting, um, a descriptor on your website about how to actually read that tax bill. Um, they had, um, uh, this is the one I was most excited about. So the high school is looking at, how do we create, um, an equitable, multi-leveled system of support? So how do we take, uh, students who need extra intervention and support and offer it to them? And so we had, um, Nicolay School District, we actually talked about it today during our, our high school meeting. They're focused totally on ninth graders. So how do we just envelop ninth graders and provide the systems, um, that kids need for support that also don't, um, make them feel like there are eyes on me? So making them feel like, um, it's really a good idea to get extra support, um, not just through having a study hall. How do we envelop our ninth graders? And we had about an hour and a half discussion today, um, Kyle and, uh, and Jesse and Tim, just on how we could do that at the high school. So one of the action items that came out of there are, we're gonna have the high school team developing a focus team and then taking that focus team to Nicolay, to see how their system works. Their system is laid out so well and so beautifully, and they've done so much research, and that was one of them. Um, we had one on elevating new board members, so really looking at the legal pieces of becoming a board member, um, how this, how we can support new board members, and, um, how that works in certifying the, the, um, election. Uh, these are just some examples. Um, top ten contract clauses, um, who wouldn't love that one? So they talked about self-insured vendors, uh, warranties, intellectual properties, employment. Very exciting, right? Um, we talked about new developments in law, so Bob Burns, one of our favorite WASB attorneys, um, talks about fundamental skills, wages, athletic eligibility, misconduct, Title IX. So you can kind of get a feel for, that's what you have to offer, so there are probably, um, every hour, ten different choices. So if you are really in tune to maintenance and buildings and facilities, you might go there. If you're in tune to budget, if you're in tune to legal, I mean, they always have all of those opportunities going on. On top of that, they also have, um, speakers, keynote speakers that are top-notch. Um, I can't wait to bring some of that forward to the whole staff, um, some of the information that those presenters, um, provided. So please, think about it for next year, it's always super cold out. Um, we usually stay at the, the Aloft, um, and we walk to the Baird Center, it's about a half mile. And we were, you just freeze, and it's just so good to get there, and then you enjoy just a great day, so. Uh, professional growth, um, was on Friday, um, along with, um, tours of the middle school. So I just wanted to share a couple of things that were, was going on, um, here on Friday, um, during professional growth. You already heard from the elementary that the, the focus was, um, PRP writing. At the middle school and high school, the focus was, um, kind of different areas. We had PBIS training going on, uh, for our guiding coalitions. And then we also, at the middle school, um, Tim has been very centered on, um, learning intentions, so he had a team working on that. Fifth grade was working on, um, some PRP things. While, uh, we had, um, high school then working in core subjects. So Tim was meeting with English and math, trying to figure out this system of support. Um, and then also, um, our specialists were working on, uh, standards. So you can see, um, and I did send you that agenda, um, last week, uh, I believe on Friday, so you could see what that looked like. But there's always something going on, and we're really trying to gear what it looks like for what the needs of that group are. But on top of that, um, we had tours going on, and I know that Wendy and Gary and Jen attended, um, the tours. We had one at eleven and one at two, eleven o'clock. I understand we had about seventy people. At two o'clock, um, they didn't count, but they thought more towards about a hundred people. Um, did the three of you wanna mention how those tours went and maybe how the dedication went?
I spent probably most of the day there, I was for, there for both of them. And, yeah, there was, the morning was, yeah, there was probably about seventy. I think Tammy was keeping, uh, a tally of the, the people coming in. We had some people coming in the, the old way, in awful Bellevue. So we missed some, but, um, yeah, we had, I don't know, there was probably, uh, maybe half a dozen, five or six different groups that, that went through. Each had their own, um, guide, and some chose to just walk around on their own, so. But I think they got probably a little more information if they, you know, they went with a guide. So I went, both times I went with, uh, Adam Roar. We kinda tag teamed, but, uh, yeah, we had a, a nice group, and then, uh, for the, the afternoon one, at two o'clock, there was a dedication to, um, Mr. Frankie, dedicated, uh, the science wing to him. And his family was there, and they, um, daughter spoke about him, and Tim, Tim gave a nice talk about him, and I, I never met the gentleman, but, uh, he was, what I heard these people talking, he was outstanding person. You know, outstanding teacher and just, uh, a, a, a great person. And, uh, so, yeah, so then after the, kind of the dedication that, that Tim did there, then, uh, broke into groups again, just, you know, walked around and so I thought it went very well.
Anything else on the tours?
I was just curious what the feedback was from those that were in attendance. Did we hear anything?
Just, I, the two groups that I went with, they were very, very impressed. They had a lot of, a lot of good questions, and, um, you know, we tried to answer them the best we could. If we, we couldn't answer them, then we would, we would get them the information, but, yeah, there was a lot of positive comments. They were, um, a lot of former students, you know, that, that went through there in the seventies and first time that they were, you know, through, you know, the, the school since then, and so they were, they were pretty impressed. And just about everybody said it was so well-needed.
A lot of respect for the changes made and, um, also, um, respect financially that it was done as it was needed, not, there wasn't anything extravagant that people rolled their eyes about. It was really nice. I was really impressed with the tour guides, I mean, we had Mrs. Zarn, Ray, the IT director of them, was really smiling and happy and to lead a tour group, so that was pretty cool to me, so, yeah, thank you to all who volunteered to do that.
Yeah, speaking of one of the tour guides, um, we had a- Yeah, speaking of one of the tour guides, we had a family, a community member stop in to make a donation to the Angel Fund, and she left a message that Adam was their tour guide, and they underlined he did an amazing job. So very nice comment from a community member. In your board docs, I, you know, we had a cold weather day last week. And of course, you know this, but just a reminder that we have the bus company, Adam, other school districts, and myself, we were having conversations for that one, that was the day before. We knew it was going to reach around that minus 33. At around minus 30, you start considering that you might have challenges with your diesel buses, you don't want children standing outside. I think the one thing you notice, and you probably noticed this as you go through bus stops, elementary kids are actually dressed pretty well, right? They have their hat and mittens on, coats, boots. And then sometimes you see maybe a middle schooler out there with a vest and a t-shirt on, waiting for the bus. So we try to be very cognizant that kids are standing out there, and hopefully at minus 33, it would be a good idea maybe not to be at school. I hate calling snow days, Sheila knows that, I hate it, I want the kids to be at school. And we also want our kids and staff to be safe as well. So I did give you the parameters of what we look at, knowing that things, no two snow days are ever the same. There's always different factors that play and take a part in it. Staffing, just to, just wanted to give you an FYI. Suzie, who was our interpreter, had to leave us, which was just a bummer. So we had Aaron and Shannon Zarn, Aaron Sisneros, Shannon Zarn and I interviewed, and we did select Jose Martinez, he's a retired religious provider and caretaker for people in hospice, and he is, he just started today. So he was over at LB Clark today, and he's going to be at each of the schools this week, and he's getting to know our schools and our families and our staff, so it's great to have, he goes, he calls himself Pepe. So his name is Jose, but goes by Pepe. And then finally, I just wanted to bring back the school perception survey. So if you recall, back in December, we had taken a look at the, during the school board meeting, we had taken a look at the school perceptions information, and at that time, we talked about bringing it back. So I did bring it back. The one thing that I didn't connect in your board docs was that first document that I shared with you back in December, where we listed out some of our areas that we had strengths in, which are behind you. And then look, if you scroll down, some of the areas that we looked at, yep, keep going, that were areas that we might want to focus on as a board. So bringing those back to you, and I'm sorry I didn't attach them, that's really kind of what you need to take a look at, but wondering if there's anything on that list that you would like the board to be focused on? On top of our strategic plan.
Well, I pulled up that from a previous meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have a proposal for this, and I'd just like to get input from the other board members. But I think my hunch is, a lot of the times, we might score low just because we don't know enough, or we think we should know more about something, not that we're not doing great at it. So I kind of looked at the areas for improvement, and I picked three that I thought would be really interesting and important for us to learn more about. And I thought a good starting point was just to ask for some information to be provided. Nothing rushed, maybe over the next six months in these areas, so that we can learn the current status and then be able to ask questions. And those were succession planning or staffing, like when it comes to the higher-level positions, what does that process look like if we lose a principal or two, or a director level? And who do we have in pipelines that have certain licensors and things? Just to get a good picture of that was one. Another one was interventions for staff or schools not meeting expectations, which really, I think, we could just all learn more about the improvement plans for teachers and how that process works, and how the union and the administration, how they manage that, what our numbers are. And, you know, maybe at schools, I'll have the goals, and when they don't meet them, like how do we expect to handle that? And then the third thing was in the budgeting, and I thought one interesting thing for us to learn more about might be some of the fixed costs that are, even our auditor brought up some of the, like the pensions and the retirements and the healthcare for retirees, that's something I don't know a ton about, but I know is quite expensive when it comes to a fixed cost in the budget. So just getting more information of what those programs are, what we're committed to, where we have any flexibility with those. So that was my, my personal thought, like just pick three topics and get us all more educated on what's the current status of those areas now. That could be in the form of something in board docs, or just kind of a summary, white paper, or something that we could be given, and then it'd be a nice springboard for questions for us, so any thoughts on that? The rest of us?
I like them, they're nice and very important subjects that could have a lot of gray areas if you don't know enough about them.
Well, I think it's a good starting point, too, and perhaps the last point that she was asking about some of the fixed costs could be part of that overview, that two-to-three-page document that's going to be kind of a snapshot that would just kind of stay there.
I think we just take a whack at it. You know, I think succession planning, I don't know who the expert on that is, I would think Diane would know most, probably about how we fill those, and some people like to hire, some people hire headhunters, some positions are harder, some, maybe we don't have anybody who's ready to be a principal now, maybe we have 10 people. I'm not super aware of that, it'd be good information, though. Performance improvement plans, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of who's on one and why, but, you know, we should know kind of where we're at with that process. And then retirement or perks for retirees and that, I know that's, we just have to have that, but it'd be nice to know more about that. And that's, it ties to some of these, I mean, I think our legislative issues always comes low, but we always then say, well, they do come through, and you go to the meetings with them on every month, and we get updates in our, things in the mail, and so on. Hopefully, you spend a lot of our time on that.
Just my thought on it, two to add, I like how you said you picked the three out, but I think areas of improvement, whatever's on there, 10 items or whatever, that we actually go through all of them. If we do three now, or whatever, I go through the list, so that, why, why do we feel that these are areas that need to be improved?
So we start with those three? Does that sound good for the rest of the board? And Jen shared that with, Jen shared those areas with me and wrote some notes on there, so we'll start working on those three, and then we can definitely, if you, if you look at it, a pretty good chunk is legislative issues. I think on our, on our board, we don't have somebody who's meeting with legislators, but just know that I do at CISA. Every three months, we're meeting with legislators, and then on top of that, our Manitowoc superintendents meet with the legislators. On top of that, we have WSB that we meet monthly with, you know, so those things are going on constantly. It might not be things that the board is doing, but those are what I'm doing on behalf of the board. But if anybody was ever interested in attending legislative meetings like that, you just got to let me know, because we do have a lot that goes on kind of behind the scenes.
Very good, anything else, Diane?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, just thinking about it. So we were in Manitowoc on last Monday, and we had three legislators there. And Paul Tittle, after the meeting, reached out and said, you know, I haven't been to Two Rivers yet, I would like to take a tour. And so I contacted his office on Friday for him to be able to come and see the high school and see what we're doing in the tech ed fields, and, you know, kind of the hands-on radar manufacturing areas. And then he wanted to see the middle school as well, so we're setting up a time for him to do that. We've had other, two other legislators go through and do that, and also a third that was running for a leadership position. So we do invite our legislators in as well to be a part and see what's going on in our school district.
I would be interested in going along.
Okay.
If I'm available.
Yep, he needed, he wants a Monday, and he needed a two-hour block, so I sent that to his office on Friday.
Thank you for doing that. All right, then, coming events. Wednesday, policy meeting, 4:45 PM in the district office conference room. February 3rd will be the facilities technology meeting, 4:45, also in the district office conference room. Our next regular board meeting here, February 10th, 5:45, here at the high school. Negotiations and finance will continue on February 18th, 4:45, in the district office conference room. And finally, the next, next regular board meeting, February 24th, here at the high school, 5:45 PM. With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thanks, everybody.